Alright, so Heaven Bible Study Part 79. Tonight, we're gonna continue to look through the book of Matthew. And we're not gonna, we're gonna start into chapter 5, but not quite get through chapter 5. So if you know how Matthew is laid out, that is the Sermon on the Mount. And there is a lot about heaven in the Sermon on the Mount. Last week, we did start looking at Matthew, chapters 1 through 3. And we saw that heaven is God's kingdom, His dwelling place. And if you remember, in Matthew, just from a Jewish standpoint, He says, "The kingdom of heaven", instead of using God's name. So we see that term used, that phrase used a lot in Matthew. Also saw that Jesus came to save people from their sins. And that Jesus is God the Son, the Messiah, the Davidic King, and the blessing to all nations. So as we look through the Old Testament, it's always pointing to Christ. And here we have the fulfillment. And Matthew works very hard to continue to show us these connections, these references to the Old Testament, or even quotes of Old Testament texts as well, to show that Jesus is the promised Messiah. Also, we saw that a saved person bears fruits that are worthy of repentance. And we'll see tonight that there's, there's a characteristic, or there's something different about kingdom people. You know, when we are saved, we are changed. And these fruits that are worthy of repentance are really coming by the power of the Holy Spirit. And Jesus on the Sermon on the Mount will talk more about what it looks like to be a kingdom person. Also, we saw that God sometimes speaks by angels and through dreams. And so that was maybe four times with Joseph, I think, where the angels spoke to him. And also, we saw that at death, a person's physical life is no more. But we know that that is only temporary, as we've looked through this study, for we all will experience the resurrection one day. There'll be a resurrection of the just, and there will be a resurrection of the unjust as well. Our heaven definition through this study is heaven is a spiritual realm, where the greatest intensity of God's presence dwells eternally. It is a holy place because God is there. It is where God rules from His throne in the heavenly temple, with the resurrected Jesus at His right hand. Holy angels and the souls of the redeemed, those that have been forgiven by grace through faith, live in heaven. Satan currently has access to the heavenly courtroom and accuses the saints daily. One day Satan will be cast out of the heavenly courtroom forever. The souls of the redeemed saints will be reunited with resurrected and glorified bodies, and will dwell on earth with Jesus for a thousand years. After the millennium, God will create a new universe and earth. Heaven will come down to earth, and the redeemed will live forever with God in a glorified body on the new earth. So taking a look at the book of Matthew tonight, we're gonna look at chapter 4 and chapter 5 up to verse 12. So the first question in our study, what is heaven? And I just got several references there. We won't actually look at those tonight. But it's the kingdom of God. And you remember, in Matthew, He usually says, "The kingdom of heaven". So we see several more references in chapter 4 and chapter 5. But getting into who goes to heaven tonight. So we're gonna start out with what Jesus was preaching, when He began to preach. What was His, His word to the people? So this is, who goes to heaven? It's those who repent. And this is Matthew 4:16 through 17. So this is after John the Baptist has been arrested. And you remember, John the Baptist was preaching, "Repent, for the kingdom of heaven is at hand". And first, we have a quote here from the prophet Isaiah. It says, "The people who sat in darkness have seen a great light; and upon those who sat in the region and shadow of death, light has dawned." So this is a messianic prophecy, that is, it's looking forward to the Messiah's coming. And this may even reference His second coming as well, if you look at the context in Isaiah. But look at that, you have darkness and light, a common descriptions that are used in Scripture. Darkness being evil, darkness being lostness. And then you have the great light, which is Jesus really Himself. And this darkness is also called the shadow of death, but light has dawned. And now what we have, and this is after the temptation of Jesus, we have Jesus begins to preach in verse 17. "From that time Jesus began to preach and to say, 'Repent, for the kingdom of heaven is at hand.'" So that message that John the Baptist preached, the same message that Jesus was preaching. And you know, often today, people try to repackage the gospel in a way that doesn't include repentance. But look at the first word of Jesus's sermon, repent. Repentance always goes along with faith. We are to, we have to realize we're sinners to be saved. And we have to turn from that sin and turn to Christ for salvation. So He tells them to repent, "For the kingdom of heaven is at hand", so God's rule over His people. What does it mean that it's at hand, but that it's near? And how near is it as Jesus is walking the earth? And we'll see in just a minute, some of the examples of what it's like to be in heaven. The fact that there's no longer a curse. And you know, as Jesus walked the earth, He continued to give people a taste of heaven, where sickness is gone, where even demonic activity is gone as well. He says, "Repent, for the kingdom of heaven is at hand." So who goes to heaven? It's those who repent. And then we get into chapter 5, and this is the Sermon on the Mount. So it is a, a long sermon from Jesus. And it starts out with the Beatitudes. Does anybody know what Beatitudes means? That's a word that's easy to mispronounce too. I'm sure you probably have heard people say beatitudes, or something like that, beautitudes. No, it's Beatitudes, and it means supreme blessings. And if you look through the Beatitudes, each time Jesus is saying blessed are so-and-so. So it's a list of people that are blessed. And in this list, it's actually characteristics of those who are followers of God. It's characteristics of those who have true faith. It really is a picture of kingdom people. And we see in these Beatitudes, really values that are very opposite from the world. You know, in the world, it's kind of cutthroat. In the world, you wanna be rich. In the world, you wanna be powerful. But we find people that are being humbled, people that are recognizing their great need for God in these Beatitudes. So the first one is in Matthew 5:3. So who goes to heaven? It is the poor in spirit. So it says, Matthew 5:3, "Blessed are the poor in spirit, for theirs is the kingdom of heaven." Now, what does it mean to be poor in spirit? Humble, yeah. It's really the opposite of being self-sufficient, isn't it? And you know, again, if we, if we come to God to be saved, we're gonna have to humble ourselves. We're gonna have to repent. We have to recognize our need. You know, as poor in spirit, we realize we're spiritually bankrupt. We have nothing really to, to offer God at all. But those who are poor in spirit, theirs is the kingdom of heaven. So again, this is, it's not that the poor in spirit are going to heaven because they're poor in spirit, but this is what happens to people that turn to God. They feel the conviction of their sin, and they humble themselves before God, and they will inherit eternal life. The next one, Matthew 5:4. "Who goes to heaven? It's those who mourn over sin." Now, this is really talking about godly sorrow, so repentance, to mourn over sin. And worldly sorrow is something that I think everybody experiences in some ways. You know, you get upset because you're caught. You know, when you're little and you do something that you're not supposed to do, and you know your parents are going to whip you, you're upset because you're gonna get whipped. That's a worldly sorrow. But this godly sorrow really understands the significance of our sin against God. So it says, "Blessed are those who mourn, for they shall be comforted." And you see, as we look at this in its entirety, you can see that verse and think, "Well, it's just talking about people who cry, they're gonna be comforted." Well, that is true too. God does comfort us in our mourning, but it's talking about mourning over sin. It is a repentant heart. And our heart should always be in a, an attitude of repentance before God. But God is going to comfort us. And what is His comfort but eternal life? So again, we have to be poor in spirit. We have to mourn over our sin. And then Matthew 5:5, "Who goes to heaven? Well, it is the meek." It says, "Blessed are the meek, for they shall inherit the earth." Now, this word meek is a little bit difficult to translate into English, because the original word has a sense of gentleness on one hand, but also strength under control. Would you think that when you think, hear the word meek? It's more like humble. I guess it would be like a synonym for humble for us. But being gentle and strength under control is really talking about self-control in general. Where does self-control come from? The Holy Spirit, exactly. See how these are all characteristics of those who are kingdom people, those who have truly been saved? So blessed are the meek, blessed are those that live a life that is self-controlled. It's gentle, yet it is strength under control by the power of the Holy Spirit. But look what He says here. So first time, the first Beatitude we have, yours is the kingdom of heaven. And then we see they're gonna be comforted, but now it says, "They shall inherit the earth." What is that talking about? The kingdom, that's exactly right. So you know, as we look through the Old Testament, there's this expectation that God is gonna create a new heaven and earth, a earth that is without the curse. You know, I don't think I'd wanna live forever on this earth, would you? This earth is cursed, but God is gonna create a new earth. And those who are meek, they shall inherit the earth. It's not the powerful. It's not those that think they have control over things. It's those who really humble themselves before God, who trust God, who realize that they need God. Matthew 5:6 is another one from the Beatitudes. "Who goes to heaven? Well, it's those who hunger and thirst for righteousness." So it's individuals that are not self-righteous. Have you ever met someone who is self-righteous? I think we all have been self-righteous at times. We need to humble ourselves. So here's the reality of those who follow God. "Blessed are those who hunger and thirst for righteousness, for they shall be filled." See, this is why this is the opposite of self-righteousness. They hunger and thirst for something they do not have. Self-righteous think, "Well, I'm, I'm good, like I am." But those who have a heart that's turned towards God, they hunger and thirst for His righteousness. And His righteousness, when we hunger and thirst for it, we will be filled. And see, all these are blessings. All these are really looking to the reality of heaven as well, because we're gonna inherit the kingdom of heaven. We are going to be comforted in God. We will inherit the earth, and we're gonna be filled with righteousness. We're gonna be made complete, holy people. Going further, "Who goes to heaven? It is the merciful," and this is Matthew 5:7. "Blessed are the merciful, for they shall obtain mercy." What is mercy? What does it mean when someone says, "Have mercy"? Stop doing that, right? Have mercy. It's compassion. Mercy is not giving us what we deserve. And you see how followers of God should reflect God in how we behave, in the way that we treat others. So blessed are the merciful. You know, when you recognize how merciful God has been to you, then you apply that to others. But those that do not show mercy, they reveal they really don't know God's mercy, do they? They don't really understand God's character. And perhaps that's something we miss sometimes as we study God's word. You know, we're always looking for kind of self-help things and whatnot. And certainly, the word does apply to our lives and the daily things we do. But let's look at God's characteristics. Let's look at how God relates to us. And this is how God wants us to relate to people as well. We should be merciful, merciful because He is merciful. And what is the greatest mercy we receive? But it is eternal life. Going further, "Who goes to heaven? Well, it's the pure in heart," Matthew 5:8. "Blessed are the pure in heart, for they shall see God." What does it mean to be pure in heart? What's that? Blameless? Yep, it's a clean heart, isn't it? It's a heart that's not full of sin. Where do we get a clean heart from? From God. I was, I think it's in Psalm 51, where David is praying, you know, after he's been confronted about his sin with Bathsheba. And he asked for God to give him a clean heart. And you know, as we humble ourselves before God, and you see how all these things really connect together. As we humble ourselves, as we're poor in spirit, we mourn over our sin. We are meek, we hunger and thirst for righteousness. We are merciful, and we are pure in heart because of what God has done. And what will happen for those who are pure in heart? "They shall see God." Now, what a picture of heaven that is. Do you desire to see God? It's hard to imagine. You know, all we have is creation to look at. And that's not anything to just kind of turn our nose up at. Creation is wonderful. Have you ever just been overwhelmed by looking at a sunset? Just looking at the beauty of God's creation? Well, God is above all of that. His glory, His beauty is something that we cannot even truly imagine. You know, we should have that great desire to see God. And you remember, as we look through the Old Testament, the people realized that they were blessed when God was with them. And certainly, what a great picture of heaven, that we are blessed because we're gonna see God. He is certainly with His people. Also, "Who goes to heaven? It's the peacemakers," and this is Matthew 5:9. "Blessed are the peacemakers, for they shall be called sons of God." Now, what's the difference between being peaceful and being a peacemaker? Think there's a difference between that? I mean, peaceful, you're just kind of not involved. You know, I'm not going to cause problems here. But a peacemaker, that's a very active seeking of peace, isn't it? Bringing resolution. There's a passage, I believe it's in 2 Corinthians, where Paul is writing to the church, and there's two women in the church that are fighting with each other, and he names them. I always find it really interesting how Paul names them. Can you imagine if I got up in the pulpit and like, "Okay, so-and-so and so-and-so, today the sermon is, you know, for you." That's, that's kind of the advantage of an evangelist, isn't it? They, they don't have to live in the midst of that. But he names these two women. And the reason he's doing that is, they're believers. And he does not deny that they're believers. But he calls the church alongside them to bring peace, to bring resolution. And you know, that is a great responsibility. It's tough too. But blessed are the peacemakers. Jesus Christ is the prince of what? Peace. Peace. And this peace is a peace that is right with God. That's ultimately, the prince of peace is bringing resolution, making us right with God. And look at how he describes these individuals. "Blessed are the peacemakers, for they shall be called sons of God." And we already talked about in Galatians, about the adoption by God. When we turn to God, when we turn to Jesus Christ for salvation, the Holy Spirit, we are born again, we're given a new heart, and we are adopted into God's family. And we will be called sons and daughters of God, children of God. So the children of God should be peacemakers in the world. Going further, "Who goes to heaven? It's those who are persecuted for righteousness sake." Now, as we look through this list, you know, poor in spirit, we can say, "Yes, you know, I can do that. Oh, I can mourn over sin. I can be meek. I can hunger and thirst for righteousness. I can be merciful, pure in heart, peacemaker." But being persecuted for righteousness sake? Are you ready to do that? Are you willing to do that? You know, this is the reality of so many of our brothers and sisters in hostile places around the world. They are persecuted for righteousness sake. What about in the United States? Are we persecuted for righteousness sake? Are we persecuted when we stand up for what is holy? Absolutely. But we're not murdered like a lot of those people in those other countries. And if you look at the growth of the early church, a part of the reason it grew like it did was because people were willing to be persecuted for righteousness sake. They were willing to die as martyrs. And their belief, their passion, their hope inspired others to come alongside. So this is what Jesus says in Matthew 5:10. "Blessed are those who are persecuted for righteousness sake, for theirs is the kingdom of heaven." So he kind of gives an end cap. The poor in spirit, theirs is the kingdom of heaven. And those who are persecuted for righteousness sake, theirs is the kingdom of heaven. But notice this, we're persecuted for righteousness sake. If you have done something wrong and you're persecuted for it, that's on you. And Paul talks about that in a letter as well. You know, there's nothing to really be congratulated for if you're doing wrong and being, I think it might actually been James that said that. But if you're doing something wrong, you should expect to be punished for it. But if you're willing to be persecuted for righteousness sake, that is, continue to stand up for truth, no matter what punishment may come, you will inherit eternal life. And see, this is really a test of endurance, a test of those who truly have saving faith, because there are some who make professions of faith. But when they are persecuted for righteousness sake, they fall away. They show they have never truly been saved, and they run. So the Beatitudes, here's the supreme blessings of eternal life. If you're poor in spirit, you will inherit the kingdom of heaven. If you mourn over sin, you'll be comforted. If you are meek, that is a self-control to being gentle, you will inherit the earth, the new earth. If you hunger and thirst for righteousness, you will be filled with God's righteousness. If you are merciful, you will be shown mercy. If you are pure in heart, you will see God, because you're, be made holy in Him. And if you are a peacemaker, you shall be called the sons of God. And if you are persecuted for righteousness sake, yours is the kingdom of heaven. So what would this heaven be like? Well, I just gave a sum of it in this, in the Beatitudes. We'll be holy. And that's what this description really is, of a holy people that are poor in spirit, mourning over sin, meek, hunger and thirsting for righteousness, merciful, pure in heart, peacemakers, persecuted for righteousness sake, holy. And we will be holy without persecution in heaven. Also, what will heaven be like? It will be free from the curse. So I mentioned this earlier, when Jesus began His public ministry. So you know, the first thing He says, "Repent, for the kingdom of heaven is at hand." And then we see what He's doing as He's walking the earth. He's giving people a taste of heaven. So this is Matthew 4:23 through 24. "And Jesus went about all Galilee, teaching in their synagogues, preaching the gospel of the kingdom, in healing all kinds of sickness and all kinds of disease among the people." And we see Jesus doing this over and over again, teaching, preaching, and healing. All these things follow Him in His ministry. So He's teaching in the synagogues, He's going to the Jewish people, and He's showing them from the Old Testament scriptures, we've already been talking about through this heaven study, that He is the Messiah. He tells them about heaven through this. And He's preaching, He's announcing the gospel of the kingdom, that the kingdom is at hand, the good news of the kingdom, the good news that you can be saved. And He's healing all kinds of sickness and all kinds of diseases among the people. So the sicknesses, you may think of more so, it's an acute illness. The disease may be more chronic diseases that individuals might have had. In verse 24, "Then His fame went throughout all Syria, and they brought to Him all sick people, who were afflicted with various diseases and torments, and those who were demon-possessed, epileptics and paralytics, and He healed them." So His fame is growing very quickly. And He's healing these individuals. Again, this is a taste of heaven, because we live in a cursed world. And this cursed world, not only do we have natural disasters, but we have sickness and disease. But you see something else in there that He was doing? He was also healing those that were demon-possessed. That's not gonna be a problem in heaven. Sickness is not gonna be a problem in heaven. So He was, again, giving a taste of heaven, because it's gonna be free from the curse. Now, what will we do in heaven? We already referenced this in Matthew 5:8. We will see God. We'll see Him face to face. And we will be rewarded. This is Matthew 5:11 through 12. "Blessed are you when they revile and persecute you, and say all kinds of evil against you falsely, for my sake." So it's a continuation of, in the Beatitudes, from where He was talking about being persecuted for righteousness sake. He said, "You're blessed if people are just doing all these things against you and saying lies basically about you, for my sake." He says, "Rejoice and be exceedingly glad, for great is your reward in heaven, for so they persecuted the prophets who were before you." So He tells us in the midst of all this attacks against us, being persecuted, rejoice and be exceedingly glad, not just glad, but be exceedingly glad. Why? Because there's a great reward waiting on you. Now, we're gonna run into this a lot more in the New Testament. But this reward, there's a bit of mystery when we see the term reward used about heaven, because we don't really know what all the blessings of heaven truly are. One thing is, we have the reward of heaven itself. So when we turn to Christ and we're persecuted for His sake, great is our reward of heaven itself, of eternal life. But we're also gonna run into this, again, through the Scripture, that there's different degrees of blessing. So some people are gonna be blessed more so than others in heaven. Some of our work is going to burn up, some of our work is going to remain. So the work that's done on, for ourselves, it's gonna burn up. The work done for Christ, we're gonna have some kind of rewards. And not only do we see different degrees of blessings spoken of in the New Testament, we also see different degrees of punishment. And maybe you've wondered about this before. It's like, you know, "Oh, this old grandma, they never, you know, accepted the lords in hell, and Hitler's over there too." Well, there's different degrees of punishment. And Jesus actually mentions that. We'll run into it probably not, not very long before, as we go through Matthew. But we will be rewarded, and these blessings just beyond what we can even imagine. So how can we know anything about heaven? As we've looked through this, it's always been special revelations, God reveals more to us. And you think about all these things we're reading tonight in the Beatitudes, Sermon on the Mount. Who is revealing it to us? Yeah, God the Son, the man from heaven. So you know, this is a testimony of the man from heaven. He, He's speaking of what He knows. He's speaking of what He has created and sustained. So other Christian beliefs that we find in this section of Matthew, there will be a new earth one day. That's mentioned in the Beatitudes about the meek will inherit the earth. And we will get more and more into that as we go into the New Testament. We also see that Jesus was the perfect substitute. And this is Matthew 4:4. So this is the temptation of Jesus. And I mentioned last week, if you had an opportunity to go ahead and read Matthew 4 before tonight. So in the temptation, Jesus is really parallel to Israel. So if you remember, Israel, before they entered in the Promised Land, the Jordan was parted, and they crossed over, they went around Jericho. So they're in the Promised Land by crossing through the water. Now, where were they before that? They were in the wilderness, exactly. Jesus is doing a reverse. So He is in the Jordan, and He comes up out of the Jordan, and He goes into the wilderness. He's really righting the wrong that Israel has done. Israel was tempted, and what happened to them? They failed miserably, miserably, but not Christ. It says, "He was led up by the Spirit into the wilderness to be tempted by the devil." So He's led up by the Spirit. You remember, He was just baptized, and the Spirit came down. He is the anointed Messiah, just as prophesied. And the Spirit leads them into this wilderness to be tempted by the devil. Now, note this, the devil is not really like God. The devil is a created being. The devil is not everywhere. Some people may think they've been tempted by the devil himself before, but more than likely, you've been tempted by demons, not necessarily the devil. This is Satan personally coming before the Son of God, accusing him. And it says, "Jesus was really tempted in all ways, yet without sin." And here he is tempted in the wilderness. And I'll read just particularly one of them, because it reveals us more about who Jesus is. And this is Matthew 4:3 through 4. Jesus is the Son of God. And the devil knew this as well. It says, "Now, when the tempter came to him, he said, 'If you are the Son of God, command that these stones become bread.'" Now, what does it mean to be the Son of God? You know, we're called the sons of God as being adopted, but is that the same thing that's being described here? No. No, it's saying of the same essence as God, that Jesus is fully God. So he says, if you are the son of God, and really you could translate that since you are the son of God, that word if could be translated that way. So the devil knows his identity. And if you notice when Jesus confronts demons throughout the gospels, they know his identity, don't they? And he tells them to shut up, and he casts them out. But here the devil's tempting, if you're the son of God, command that these stones become bread. Now who can do that? Who can turn stones to bread? Well, God can. He's tempting him. This is what he's tempting with, Jesus is hungry. And Jesus has been in the wilderness forty days and forty nights. How long was Israel in the wilderness? Forty years, yeah, so there's still this parallel that's being given of Jesus's temptation. This is how Jesus responds. It is written, man shall not live by bread alone, but by every word that proceeds from the mouth of God. So more important than physical food is spiritual food. The physical body dies, but the spirit lives on. And I love as you read through this temptation, all the temptations that he faces, he responds to Satan with scripture. And you know, Satan actually was, tempts him with scripture in the other spots as well. Satan knows the word, how scary is it if we don't know the word? If we don't have the sword of the spirit ready to react? And this isn't a word for us, we could, we're not gonna live by bread alone, but by every word that proceeds from the mouth of God. And also we see here that believers are called to invite others to heaven. And this is Matthew four, eighteen through twenty. And it really, it shows the great commission early on before Jesus lays it out like we know in Matthew twenty-eight. To go and make disciples of all nations, baptizing them in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, teaching them to observe all that he has commanded them. Here we have Peter and Andrew. Now this is not Jesus's first encounter with Peter and Andrew. Andrew, we know for sure was a disciple of John the Baptist, and it may, Peter may have been a disciple as well, but we know that Andrew told Peter about Jesus. And here it comes, Jesus walking, this is Matthew four, eighteen through twenty. And Jesus walking by the sea of Galilee saw two brothers. Simon called Peter and Andrew, his brother, casting a net into the sea, for they were fishermen. Then he said to them, follow me, and I will make you fishers of men. And they immediately left their nets and followed him. What does it mean to be fishers of men? You're not catching them and cleaning them, are you? Well, I guess you are, sorta. Well, I could go maybe further with that one. No, the fishers of men, we are, we're really telling other, inviting others to come along and to follow Christ. We're always pointing people to Christ, we're inviting others to heaven. And you know, when we understand that's really what sharing the good news is, we're inviting other people to heaven. You know, if you had tickets to, you know, let's just say a great ballgame or something, you're like, maybe it was, maybe let's say you're gonna go to the Super Bowl, and you got tickets for it. And you had more tickets, and you're gonna invite someone else, this is gonna be fun, let's go to the Super Bowl. Well, how much better is heaven than the Super Bowl? We have the ticket to heaven, and we're inviting others, come on, you can go with me. And we have here, Peter and Andrew, they were fishermen. They had a business, they left their business to follow Jesus. They were also more what you would say, common people. You know, this weren't, they weren't the priests and the scribes. We were common people, they were fishermen. And Jesus spoke to them really on their level. They're fishermen, they know what it's like to fish, they know the preparation it takes. They know how much work it takes. Do you think it takes preparation and work to be fishers of men? It does. And certainly they were thinking this as they followed him, they left their nets and they followed him. And they wanted to, to know Christ better, they wanted to go where he was going. So the summary of the book of Matthew as we look tonight, chapter four through verse, uh, through chapter five, verse twelve. We see that heaven is the kingdom of God, so again, Matthew uses that very Jewish phrase, the kingdom of heaven. We also see that heaven is for those who repent, are poor in spirit, mourn over sin, are meek. Hunger and thirst for righteousness, are merciful, are pure in heart, are peacemakers, and are persecuted for righteousness sake. And those in heaven are holy and free from the curse. Those in heaven see God and will be rewarded. And the redeemed will inherit the new earth. Jesus, he is the perfect substitute and the son of God, and of course, this is a the key to all this other, like if Jesus was not the perfect substitute, if Jesus was not the son of God, we'd still be in our sins. Jesus came to save us. And we also see that believers are called to invite others to heaven. I once heard a, a pastor say it this way, you know, when we're thinking about inviting other people to heaven. When we're thinking about telling people about Jesus, sometimes we worry we're gonna offend people. And the truth is, sometimes we may offend people when we share that. But is that worse than them going to hell? Are you willing to suffer? To share the good news, so that person doesn't go to hell? Is it worth offending somebody? You know, we show our love for someone by telling them the truth in love. But let us be prepared to be fishers of men. It's gonna take some work. And it's gonna, it's gonna really be a mission our entire lives. But Christ has called us to follow him, and let's leave our nets and follow him. Anybody have anything to add or questions tonight? You can really look at the Beatitudes in a whole new light when you really understand what he, what he's talking about, what is to be blessed, what is eternal life? And he talks about the characteristics of these, of the new people, of the king, the kingdom people, those that have been born again. And certainly we can, we all see that we, we fall short. But God and his mercy continues to do a work on us our whole life. Anybody got anything? All right, let's close with a word of prayer tonight. Father, we love you and we thank you for your faithfulness, we thank you for your word tonight, Lord. I pray that you would just continue to equip us to be the people that you have called us to be, a holy people. People that mourn over sin, people that hunger and thirst for righteousness. And Father, I pray that we would just be bold for truth. That we would be willing to be persecuted for your name's sake, and that we would invite others to heaven. Father, I thank you for the, the hope that we have, the great expectation of the future. Knowing that the suffering here does not compare to the glory to come, and we thank you for that, Lord. We thank you for your blessings, we thank you for your mercies that are new each day. And I pray that we would all just continue to grow in you, Lord, and that we would know your love better. In the holy name of Jesus, I pray, amen.